Stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Norby?
Here.
Councilmember Woods?
Here.
Councilmember McKenzie?
Here.
Councilmember Schwerz absent. Mayor Muggie?
Here. Thank you very much. Motion to adopt the agenda, please.
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Woods?
Second.
Second. Councilmember McKenzie. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much. And send agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A, June 17th, 2025 workshop in city council minutes. Item B, general claims of $912,732.97. Item C, HRA claims of $10,725.66. And item D, ISD 622, school resource officer for the contract of 2025 to 2027.
Hold on, sorry.
Looking for a motion.
Yep. Anybody want to pull anything at this time? If not, can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Norby?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Woods. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Open to the public. You have one. Rachel. Caught you mid-drink. Welcome. Say your name and address, please.
My name and address?
Yeah.
Rachel Lucas, 22, 22, 17.
Perfect. Welcome.
Hi. If you guys have any questions about the Parks and Rec CIP proposals, I'm a Park and Rec Commission board member, so it might be speaking later, but I figured while I'm here, I might as well say some things. I know the website got updated recently, but I think it would be beneficial if we could add meeting, like bullet point summaries for both city council, Parks and Rec, arts and culture, the other ones, in addition to kind of a one-stop shop of what has the board accomplished, what are they currently working on? Because I feel like, me personally, when I was trying to get up to date on Parks and Rec, it wasn't very easy to go to the meetings or the minutes, and then the meetings were like an hour, two hours. So I don't think that's very attainable for the average citizen to put in all this time and effort to review everything to know what's happening. So an easier, more streamlined way to communicate what we're talking about. Similarly, I know, I think it was on the last website, I don't know if it was on the updated website, where a list of all the city projects, so updating the website, or the roadwork construction by Casey Lake, what the boards are doing, events. There could be like a list of what all the current projects that are being worked on, and then you can click like, update me on this, update me on this. And there can be a little like bullet point under each where it says, this is the current step we're on, here's the next step, here's what we're working on. So just making it easier for everyday folk to kind of keep tabs on what's happening. And then, I think, lastly, I'm very excited that you guys are looking into updating the community center. I think third spaces are very valuable for communities to engage with each other and build a sense of community. So I'm very excited to see you guys interested in making sure it's valuable, how people will use it, and stuff like that. So I'm excited to see what you guys do with it.
All right.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, city business action items. First item A and B, I'm going to turn over to our finance director, Dan Winnick. First one up is the approval of addition 2025 Park and Rec Capital Improvement Project. And item B, approving agreement with Paycom for human resource payroll systems and payroll services.
Mayor, council members, I haven't spoken enough today, so I thought I'd do a little bit more. But yes, this first item that's before you is to approve additional 2025 park and recreation capital improvement projects. Truthfully, there were no 2025 capital improvement projects for the park and recreation that were submitted. I think part of it was due to HGA was doing their study, and they were waiting for the final on to that. Staff was approached by the Park and Rec Commission if there was an opportunity that they could bring in some projects for 2025. So I spoke with the city manager, and we kind of laid out kind of a process for them to follow. And the process was that put in requests, just like everybody else does, and also make sure you have requests that are in the 26 to 35 that will be approved later on by city council through the discussion. And so they, I had met with them and kind of walked through the process part to it. I have to say, they did an absolutely amazing job. They put together very good ret requests. We had a subcommittee that was made up of community development staff, our city manager, Park and Rec, our, I mean, our public works department. We reviewed each one of those requests. We made recommendations. Last Wednesday night, Ron, Richie, our public works director, and myself attended the Park and Rec Commission over at the beautiful Housie Park, and that's an amazing park, city block. And we met with the Park and Rec Commission and went through and had a very nice dialogue of why we recommended some things, why we decided to push them out to other years, and so forth. Absolutely great dialogue, very good communication. A little disappointed that Councilmember Schwerz is not here tonight because she does chair that, and she was very supportive of these items. And I would like to have had the opportunity for her to say a few pieces. At the end of the day, what we had agreed on bringing forth for city council's consideration was there's Casey Lake Open Air Shelter for $10,000 of funding this year, and it's really to, I think, remove, there's two older shelters that are there that are in bad shape. And then there's, there is funding in the 2026 to rebuild one. Further discussion needs to take place with the park commission on location and so forth, and if they desire to do that. There was one on the Casey Lake reutilization update for $100,000. It's basically that, you know, we demolished the ball fields on three and four, open, have some more open space, and 26 adds some soccer nets and so forth to make the, make it a little bit more usable. Originally, it was the Housie Park 2025 improvement for $2,000 to add a Gaga ball pit. There would need to be some ADA compliance components to it added to Housie Park. But there was also a request for the Gaga pit in two other parks, so we've changed it to be, we'll go with the Northwood Park with a Gaga pit is the recommendation. And then Polar Park Playground to put in some additional, a lot of the old equipment, a lot of the equipment is old, is to put in some new equipment. That's at about $63,000. And then to look at the Urban Ecology Center, nature play and seating for about $2,000. There's still some more discussion on that one that'll take place to make sure that we're not in DNR space and that, you know, it really does have an enhancement for that area. But again, the conversation with the Park and Rec Commission was absolutely fantastic, very good communication all the way around. And so at the end of the day, staff is, Park and Rec last Wednesday unanimously supported moving forward with this. And so we're taking it forward to city council to see if we can get approval. What it means is that these five projects totaling off just on our, under $177,000 would be funded from the park fund, and it would require there's resolution to that effect for city council to consider moving forward with that so we could start to do that and get them, most of them all completed this year and 2025 still. Stand for any questions. We've got Ron that can answer some questions. And then we also have a representative from the Park and Rec Commission.
Could I have a tour? Would Ron be able to take me around so I could see what we're doing, what the projects are? This is the first I've heard of anything.
Ron?
I'll ride in the back if you want.
In the back it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other?
My question is for Jack. Have you had time to review this, and do you believe that this expenditure is in line and correct with the ADA requirements for the city for updates to parks?
I don't know that I've looked at this one specifically. For ADA requirements, that is enough of a technical area that I usually defer to, you know, the more technical design staff on that one. This doesn't raise my eyebrow in terms of the amount that we're putting into it.
Okay. Doesn't have to be a certain amount of work done before that kicks in for ADA stuff?
This more falls under Morgan.
Along that, if they, excuse me, but if they have to, if they're looking to remove a couple ball fields, will they need new ADA pathways back to the soccer fields or anything?
Go ahead.
What was the question, Councilmember McKenzie?
With the proposal of maybe moving a couple ball fields away from McKnight Fields, or Casey Lake Fields, would they need new type of access for ADA accessibility for wheelchairs and/or kids with walkers, things like that?
The answer is potentially, and I would say probably, it's something that should be planned for, again, from a planning standpoint, when you're planning parks improvements. My experience and the advice that I've always gotten from registered landscape architects that with expertise in, you know, park planning and parks improvements, is that if you improve a portion of a park, a public park, you should strive to make that improvement accessible to all populations, right? So not just non-disabled populations, but also including disabled populations. And that goes back to the Americans with Disabilities Act, which is federal law since 1994, or something like that, right? So it applies to everybody. And sometimes the requirements are more stringent, as we saw with the pickleball project, pickleball court improvement project recently that was funded by DNR outdoor recreation grants. And so there was an expectation if those funds were going to be used by the city that there would be more accessibility improvements made. So, you know, we tied in the playground equipment in addition to the pickleball courts, and also the pavilion or the shelter there as well, too. So, again, backing up to kind of just high-level guidance, if you're going to provide some improvements, you know, which could be moving a field, or could be building a shelter, or it could be building a Gaga ball court, or pit, or whatever, again, the, what should be planned for and strive for by the, by the city, by the local community is to be able to improve it such that all populations can use it. There is some nuance to that, meaning if there were like five Gaga ball courts throughout the city, you know, some of them, as long as like, at least one of them is made accessible to disabled folks, there may be some acceptance of that as opposed to having every single one. But each park and each amenity needs to be looked at individually because they tie into one another. And so, like in Housie Park, for example, you've got multiple different things. And certainly, you don't want to isolate handicap population from, you know, you can get to the pickleball court, but not the shelter, right? That's maybe not necessarily what the city would want to plan for. I mean, but there are real budget constraints, as you are all kind of talking about right now. So anyway, that's what I can offer at a high level, is it should be planned for, and you should expect some level of ADA improvements. Certainly before 1994, we were not contemplating these things, but it is pretty much the standard these days.
So, Morgan, I'm going to put you on the spot here a little bit.
It's okay.
If you were in my seat, would you vote to approve this, or would you vote to table it and ask for review by someone such as yourself to make sure that these improvements are in compliance?
Well, that is a highly hypothetical question, Councilmember Norby, and I certainly can't presuppose to be an elected official in making those decisions, right? So, but from a staff standpoint, I did at a high level review, at least the Gaga ball concept, not the plan necessarily, but with Ron and Public Works. So we did talk about that, and I know that he, I don't know the numbers in front of you, but my understanding is that he understood a need to make some connections there so that it would be accessible. And looking at least at the Housie Park location, it seems relatively straightforward and simple. You know, it's as simple as some hard surface connection, whether that's asphalt or concrete. So not extremely expensive, but something that should be relatively easy to do, even by Public Works, you know, no need to necessarily hire a contractor. Public Works could certainly do these things. So I can't make the recommendation to you to approve, like to answer your question, should I vote for this? But with the information that I have and the conversation that the Public Works Director and myself had, it seems like it's a reasonable thing to include, certainly knowing that the standard is, we need to plan for improvements that are available to all populations, you know, not just some. So I think that as long as those expenditures fit within the budget, and, you know, again, finances looked at those things, I wouldn't have a reason for you to, you know, hit pause unless that's something that staff is recommending. I think staff is bringing this to you in a fashion that, you know, should be certainly ready for consideration from your guys' standpoint, weighing all of the options in terms of expenditures, and what are the amenities that the city should choose to install, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got one more, if I could. Now, with our Casey Lake, and we're going to do some work down there, is the Casey Lake Playground, has that been brought up to ADA codes for all the kids to be able to get in and out of that playground and along the parking lot there? Is that all under ADA compliance? If, if they're going to do the work down there, maybe they want to readdress this a little bit and make it more of a ADA program, because I've got a disabled daughter in a chair. She couldn't go into that sand pit out there. She'd get stuck.
Didn't they put down something in that when they redid it for the, after that girl that died?
Or Casey?
Yeah.
I thought, I thought they did, but I...
Yeah, I thought they brought that up to...
Okay.
Now, there's a difference, there's a difference between making a playground area accessible to get to, and then having playground equipment specifically designed for cracks for kids with, that have mobility needs or that sort of thing. There is specialized playground equipment, for example, which I don't think that's in Janey's playground necessarily. But to answer your question, I think, you know, again, separate item from what you're considering here. But for the future, the council certainly could consider different levels of ADA standalone upgrades, in addition with other park improvements, you know, to be able to see if there's a way to combine what the Park and Rec Commission would like to see in terms of additional amenities and additional programming, but then also some additional accessibility improvements as well, too. But that would be a separate item, separate initiative, separate priority than what you're considering here tonight.
Thank you. Are you good with your question? You need Ron or anybody? You're good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, we have to vote on this. If approval of the additional, or do we?
Can I interject something to make sure we're not confusing something? So this idea was discussed again because initially, the Gaga ball court was going to be at Housie. When it interjected with now installing a sidewalk and making sure we had the right inclines and doing it right, the idea of these were to see if they would take off. I mean, we looked around at neighboring cities to see if any parks had these. We couldn't find them. It's not to say that they're not out there, but we did not. They are more at schools for kids. So instead of spending all this money and maybe putting this out here and finding out that maybe this isn't going to be used that much, and now you have a sidewalk to nowhere if nobody's using this court, the idea, and I don't know if they're bringing this back to, you would really like to speak before I step on myself here?
That's why you're moving it to the other park, then, right?
All right. So what, Morgan answered the questions that I hope that you had. What happened with the Gaga ball pit at...
It is a Gaga ball pit. I have no, I'm 100 years old. I don't know.
I had, when I first heard about it from the Parks Commission, I had to look it up and find out what it is. It's basically an octagon. They come in different sizes. They're about, let's call it three feet tall, and they're anywhere from 15 feet to 30 feet round, octagon. And it's like a dodgeball that they play with, but apparently they use their hands, they knock the ball around, and they get hit from the knee down, and it's kind of like a dodgeball. And once you get hit, you're out of that. So that's about what I know about it. So I had to do some checking to see what they were, what sizes they were, before I went to Parks Commission meeting. So what, what they were talking about, when I talked to, we decided on putting one, a permanent one, at Housie. I talked to Morgan if we would have to make it ADA accessible, and he said, yeah, just kind of, pretty much how he explained it. If you're going to do any improvements to the parks, kind of just plan on making that happen. So the last conversation I had, we had about it when I was talking to Sarah, who is a kind of liaison from the city for the Parks Commission, is that we were going to put on hold the one at Housie so we didn't have to go through a process of putting a permanent one in, putting a sidewalk to it. And I believe we were talking about looking at purchasing a portable one, because the budget number that we had for the Gaga ball pit was $2,000. Obviously, Public Works was going to build this, it was going to be out of green treated wood. It was going to be, and we talked about building a permanent one because we didn't, the portable, there's portable ones, and it looks like they could be folded up and taken. So I believe the conversation was, is that we were going to put the idea for Housie Park on hold and put one at Northwood in the hockey rink, a portable one. So then it was accessible for everybody. The difference in a handicapped one versus a normal one is there's a swinging door on, on the Gaga ball pit in order for people to be able to get in there. So that is what, that is where the conversation was, kind of what we talked about, to stay within that, that budget and not go through and put in a whole sidewalk to something that may not be used, so.
It's all new. So that's what going inside the, inside the rink with the boards?
That, that's what we had talked about, yes.
I have to drive up there and see what's going on up there. But I do want to get down by Casey and see what we can do to do some of these fields and that. I'd be interested.
Yeah, in, in the fields, from my under, from, from my understanding, is what we were going to do is we were going to take out the egg lime in the fields and just make it, make the two fields back there that are not used, just black dirt and, and grass in there. And then we were going to add a couple soccer nets out there. So that, that's kind of was, was the plan. So they're really not change, we're not really, I mean, you know, if you want to call it an improvement, or, I mean, I don't know what that is considered, but that, that was kind of the plan that we had talked about.
Could we generate revenue by bringing in soccer teams to play there where they rent our fields?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm sure that, I, yeah, I don't know a whole lot about soccer and what, you know, what they're looking for, but I know a lot of the bigger cities have, you know, Beilenburg, I know they have multiple, like, lots of fields, and other places have lots of soccer fields, so I have no idea what the appetite is for that, but...
Thank you.
All right.
Oh, you got another one?
No. You're good. So I guess, reading what, you know, listening into what Ron said and what we have in front of us, what we have in front of us is wrong. Is that correct?
I apologize. I didn't see that.
No, so, I mean, here we have Housie Park 2025 improvement of $2,000 to put in a permanent Gaga ball pit. And the plan is not to do that. Am I missing something?
The, the...
There's been an update. Am I looking at the wrong one?
The, the second one that come out.
Oh, I'm probably looking at, okay, never mind.
You have to close it out and then open it back up again.
I did the same thing over the weekend. I grabbed it, then there was a revision on Monday.
So they crossed off Housie and put Northwood.
Oh, okay.
Good catch, though.
Yep. Anything else you want to add to that, Brian?
Nope.
All right. Everybody feel comfortable with what we discussed? All right. Approve the additional 2025 park and rec creation capital improvement project. Can I get a motion for that, please?
I'll make a motion.
Motion. Councilmember McKenzie?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Norby? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Appreciate it. You going to come back again, Dan? Are you going to close this, open this?
You know, I still have one more item here.
Oh, I knew you would.
And then, and then I'm calling it a night. This one's very exciting. I'm going to have to contain Jenny, who's sitting to my left here. But yes, it's asking for the approval of agreement with Paycom for a human resources payroll system and payroll services. And when I came, came here four years ago, I was kind of a little shocked that there wasn't an HR system. Everything's done manually, paper-driven, paper-driven. And, you know, so PAFs are all handwritten, nothing's entered on a system until it gets to payroll. There's another humanistic piece to it. We've been fortunate, we've got a very good person who does our payroll, who's very accurate, but there's always a chance for errors. You saw in our, in our audit report for the financial statement this, this past year, that we were cited on, on that because some documentation doesn't, you know, couldn't find it, that were a number of years back. Well, when you have a HR system that has everything electronically, it becomes your data repository. And things are electronic, you'll be able to find it. And so this ends up being that piece. So what we did through a process part to it is, we issued an RFP, and we ended up getting five proposals. And then we had a little committee that independently reviewed those five proposals, and we rated them. And we ended up coming down and choosing to request demonstrations from two of the companies. Paycom being one of the, the two companies, the other one being UKG. Both of them did an amazing job. At the end of the day, the selection committee made a unanimous recommendation to go with Paycom. Probably one of the biggest components with it is, is that there's local representation. There's going to be somebody actually onsite to help out with the implementation, training, and not just, you know, you know, HR and the payroll staff, but also our employees. and not just, you know, you know, HR and the payroll staff, but also our employees on what they can do. This system has an, an app where basically, I think they call, is it Betty? They call it Betty? That after an employee has put in their time sheet and it's ready to go through, they actually have the opportunity to approve their time sheet. Obviously, we can make adjustments to it and that stuff, but they'll know exactly at that point in time how much they're taking home, what their deductions were, everything. They'll be able to make, you know, changes to, you know, their direct deposit, they'll be able to make changes to their withholdings and so forth. We'll have it integrated with our benefit and make an open enrollment much easier. Right now, Jenny has the headache of having to gather all that stuff from open enrollment, putting it into spreadsheets, and they're all manually updated on every single employee. And it's very time consuming and creates the opportunity for, for many errors. And the whole application process will end up being an online process. And a lot of the information that the applicant puts in will be stuff that'll go right into our system, so we're not duplicating that. And on the finance side to it, we have an aging finance department. And the person who we've been fortunate enough to have do our payroll isn't that much younger than myself. And so what this gives us, an opportunity is to actually have, you know, we still have to do all the checks and balances and that stuff, but they take over a lot of the state and federal reporting. We're still responsible for it, we still need to check it over. And they also do a lot of the ACHs and so forth and components to it. I think the annual piece, so we did, we, we got a four-year term negotiated with them. We anticipate the, the annual cost will be about $32,000 for the four years. There's a 0% in year one, 1% in year two, 2% in year three, and then 4% in the fourth year. There's a little over a $3,000 implementation one-time cost, which was significantly less than what our other vendor was, and actually both their annual and their implementation costs, we successfully negotiated them downward. And so looking for your approval on to that, but before I answer any questions and that stuff, I really want to give the opportunity for Jenny to tell us how excited she is with this. And she, she's probably going to kick me here, but that's.
You're going to be beat up tomorrow.
Well, thank you. Dan covered most everything, but it's very exciting, both as a staff and as an employee. So with everything going smoothly for implementation, we are actually looking that we could have this all fully implemented by open enrollment, yeah, the end of October, so.
Timing. Good.
Yeah, she's going to give me, I know.
You're going to be able to stay home later in the morning, then?
She just accepted that one. That was easy. So if there's any questions that you have, kind of a reminder, we, we tried this a couple of years ago to move over to, I won't say the vendor's name, City Council had approved it. They really let us down on their implementation schedule, they didn't meet a thing. And so we ended up cutting, you know, cutting that one off. So it took us a little, about a year and a half to kind of lick our wounds and build staff morale up to give it another shot, but I think we, you know, with Jenny, and then we have Jackie and Melissa on the finance side that are all eager to get into this and to see it be successful. And you know what the big thing is, as they were walking through on the demonstration, you know what my comment was? I probably even could run payroll. See, did you hear that? She said, I don't know.
Doubting you.
So if you have any questions with, with this, but, you know, we'd be happy to answer anything on to it.
My only question is, is coming from a private to a public side. Are there any certifications or rules that they had to follow to be in compliance with the public side of things that they're guaranteeing that they will do?
Yes, the reporting, yes. Very, it was a very, very extensive RFP. There was questionnaires like you couldn't believe, but it was including the 941 state federal reporting, everything there. And they had to respond to every single one of the questions that were, that was in their, in their proposal. And then many of them were asked again to confirm in demonstration. So yes, so Paycom does a lot with a lot of county government in the state of Minnesota. So they are familiar with the rules. And the nice part about it is when changes occur, they make the changes, you know, because this is in the cloud, they make the changes. We don't have to pay for another upgrade and go through another whole implementation of an upgrade. So it's pretty, pretty seamless, pretty slick, and yes, that was a big, huge piece that we, we had asked all the way through it. And again, all the security components, yeah, were, all the questions were asked.
And only in the RFP, you made sure that they put it in the contract as well?
Yes, by the contract does reference, yes.
And Dan, thank you for reading my mind. I should have worded that better. You believe the public sector is a big enough piece of their pie where they will continue to do that?
Well, and nothing's guaranteed in this world, but I certainly believe that they will be around, you know, Paycom's pretty big. And, yeah, I believe that they'll, they'll still be around. The, we just have one piece left with it, and the resolution is written that way to be contingent upon our city attorney doing a, and I'm not putting any pressure on when our city attorney is done. We're asking for approval, but it, I don't want anybody to sign it in until I hear from our city attorney that they're comfortable with everything, and that's part of make sure that the language is clear enough, that it's incorporating both, because I'm customary and this is, that I want the RFP to be included in the agreement, and I want their response to be, because that's customary of how I've always done things, so.
It's done with any contract, actually.
So the $3,000 implementation, you know, professional services or whatever you want to call it, is that based on a number of hours that we get from them for, you know, implementation, training, things like that? Or is it just a set, you know, $3,000 for getting it stood up however long it takes?
I, I, well, it's $3,000 set for however, how long it takes for them to do it. To give you kind of a point of reference, one of the vendors, I'm not going to give, you know, the, the name publicly unless somebody were to ask it in a data request, but they wanted $17,000 for that implementation, because there is a lot of time that's going to be considered to set up. See, part of the system, all of our, our policies and procedures, our rules, have to be written into this. So that system automatically knows whether this is an overtime, it's not an overtime. We've got some particular components with our police where it goes into suspense time and then suspense taken. So there's rules that have to be written to accommodate different, different things. So they will be spending a considerable amount of time just in the implementation and then in training. So I think $3,000. You know, I, I mean, the truth to it is if we were paying $100 an hour, that's only 30 hours. I think they're going to be spending well more than 30 hours on this.
One, one last question, and this is just for my own curiosity for you. Are you guaranteed a dedicated customer care representative, or is it you call and you get who you get?
We have somebody who will follow us through the whole way through implementation, and after that, we transition into somebody else in their local.
Okay, awesome.
Minnesota, yep.
Very good questions. You, you, you're very familiar with this. Yes.
All right. Thank you. Motion for approved agreement of the Paycom Human Resources Payroll System and Payroll Services.
So moved, Your Honor?
So moved. Councilmember Norby?
Second.
Second. Councilmember Woods. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
City Council, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Good job.
Yes. Well, good. Well, thanks. Appreciate it.
All right, next up, we have the Ramsey County Hazard Mitigation Plan. We have Fire Chief Jason Mallinger to discuss.
Still got a few minutes for a swim, Dan, so you'll do all right when you get home. Welcome.
All right. Hello. Thank you, Mayor, council members, for having me. So I'm here tonight to discuss the 2025 Ramsey County Hazard Mitigation Plan. And I guess to straightforward put it, the HMP, as we'll call it, identifies mitigation goals and actions to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to people and property from the impacts of future hazards. And as you'll hear, we're going to encompass all types of hazards here into this plan. Really, this began well over a year ago, and I should say the last time that we went through this was 2019. This is my first time going through the Hazard Mitigation Plan with Ramsey County. So it was, it was a good process. But with Ramsey County, they basically had consultants, Title Basin was the name of the consultant that conducted these multiple meetings. And again, this is with every city within Ramsey County, and each city has input on the planning process. And from the beginning, it builds off of the previous plans and identifications of risks and hazards that are specific to each community. So we're building off of that each year, or each plan, I should say. So again, some of those risks and hazard identifications that were talked about, floods, hazardous materials, tornadoes, windstorms. Years back, the tornado that went through Hugo and how it impacted them and how they were able to deal with it. Winter hazards as well, whether it's snow or ice. Human-caused hazards, active shooters, civil unrests, cyber attacks, terrorism. Also, infrastructure failure, so something as enormous as the 35W Bridge collapse years ago, something like that. But what would happen locally if we had a problem with one of our bridges or something on Highway 36th? So the goal of, of this is really to identify ways to mitigate some of these issues and to have conversations with departments. So last year, again, meeting with Public Works and identifying, you know, what they were doing to reduce flood reduction measures, and kind of their plan and how they were dealing with things. Working with the electric department to, do they have plans to clear trees and brush from power lines so that during a windstorm, we're not having power outages that affect large people or a large group of people? And do they have plans in place to put power underground? So all these things are already in action and that we're doing, we're just putting them together in a plan and incorporating them into the overall Ramsey County plan. And the mitigation strategy is about the community's capabilities and assessing what resources they may need in the future, whether it's locally, at the state, or federally. And once this plan is approved by all of the communities within Ramsey County, the plan has already been approved at the federal level, but we're needing every community within Ramsey County to be a part of it. And then at that point is when we are approved for local mitigation plan, which allows us to apply for and/or receiving FEMA mitigation grants from the following programs. Hazard mitigation grant program. Building resilient infrastructure in communities. Flood mitigation assistance. Safeguarding Tomorrow revolving loan fund. So going through this plan, again, a lot of things we're already doing, it's updating to keep us moving forward, but it keeps us involved with the county and the emergency management system as well. Another area, talking about continuity of operations. So if we had an event that happened in North St. Paul, what happens if our Public Works building or our city hall, fire department, police department is, you know, has some damage? How do we continue to operate? So we have what's called a COOP plan that's separate from this, but is part of it. So we have those things in, in place and how we could potentially work in other areas within the city or within Ramsey County as needed. So it looks at the disruption of governmental services and basically gives us a baseline within the community to kind of work off of. I think I went through that pretty quick, but I know, I know it's 214 pages of a lot of information, but for me, like I said, it's been a year and a half in, in planning and, and working with Ramsey County and Title Basin. And most recently, myself and the city manager, Brian Frandl, attended a, a meeting that was held a few weeks ago for all staff and those related, you know, with the emergency management in Ramsey County. I can take questions if you have any. Hopefully, I can ask them, answer them.
Are you in favor of everything that we're looking at here?
Yes, definitely.
This would benefit our city a lot, wouldn't it?
Yes, it's, 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 it's needed if, if anything were to ever happening, happen in our city. Like I say, this will allow us to have future mitigation reimbursements if there's anything out there for us and, and other resources needed if, again, something large were to come through our city.
So for a city of our size, what do you, I mean, based on what you're seeing from other cities, what, I mean, what do you feel like we're missing or are we in good alignment with what you feel like we need?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's, it, it really was interesting to be, you know, the city of North St. Paul, again, working along with the city of St. Paul, who have dedicated emergency management team, like a legit team of many people. But you think of the size and what they have, I mean, they have to, many areas that regard, with regards to the river and the dams and those types of things. So they have definitely a lot more risks than, than we do. But looking at what we have in our community and what is here and what our staff is currently doing, I think we're doing an adequate job of addressing what we have and what we need and continue to, to move forward. And this even goes to the extent of our plan, you know, working with the school district and what do they have? And what do our, you know, some of these facilities as that house our, our, our older folks, you know, do they have a plan there as well? And do they have a generator for backup power in case of those things? And is there ways that we can assist them with those types of things? So, yeah, there's a lot. I think we're doing a good job for what we have here.
And I assume this is all cooperative, so if, you know, one city were to have an emergency and another not, you know, we would send resources or they would send resources back and forth to us.
Yeah. You know, and, and that's kind of where it all ties back to, I think, not too long ago, I had sent the Capital City Mutual Aid Agreement Plan to you, you know, for the fire department, that is a piece of it, and then the police department has that, and I'm sure public works departments and our electric department have that. So they all tie together, but definitely the communities do come together in, in the time of need. And this mitigation plan will, once approved... plan will, once approved and solidified within the county, if something extends into an extremely long cleanup, expensive project, you know, Dan's going to have his, some hours there tracking all this and making sure. But there would be a potential way to recoup costs. Yeah.
It's going to be an ever-changing, updated thing you need to do.
Yeah. And from what I've seen, it seems like every five years or so, they update the plan.
Well, good.
Thank you for all your hard work on this. Appreciate it.
Yeah. So looking for your approval on that. Yeah.
Ramsey County Hazard Plan, mitigation plan. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember McKenzie?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Norby. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
All right, next up.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
City Engineer Morgan Dolly here to discuss the Ramsey-Washington Metro Watershed District Memorandum of Understanding and Flood Risk Reduction Project at the PCU Pond and 13th Avenue.
Thank you, City Manager Frandl, Mr. Mayor, members of the councils. So this item before you on the agenda next is to consider authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the city of North St. Paul and Ramsey-Washington Metro Watershed District for the construction and ongoing ownership and maintenance of some flood risk reduction improvements that the watershed district has designed and is planning on constructing sometime this summer. So a little bit of background, backing up to earlier this year, representatives from the watershed district contacted myself and Ron and Randy from Public Works, asking if they could share some ideas and some preliminary construction plans for basically reconfiguring some of the storm sewer on the south side of 13th Avenue and in the northwest corner of PCU, or sometimes called Target Pond, which is between 13th Avenue and 11th Avenue west of McKnight. There is an area, and previous councils have heard presentations from myself, and I think the public has had presentations from city staff and also watershed district staff with respect to flood-prone areas throughout the city. The area just north of 13th Avenue is one of those areas. There's some low-lying areas there, south of Shaun's Way, north of 13th Avenue, in that general vicinity, that are susceptible to flooding and during extreme rain events where the pond may come up to a high level, and water may be surcharging and backing up through some of the storm sewers back there and filling in some of those low areas. And so, a lot of that flood risk has previously been identified by the watershed district, and very nicely, they are putting their own dollars that are collected from the taxpayers into improvements within the city of North St. Paul. So now, this project that they're contemplating kind of has two locations. One of them is in Maplewood, but one of them is in North St. Paul, as we said, on the north side of the pond. In addition to reconfiguring some of the storm sewer pipes there, they're also proposing to build a relatively short, you know, two to three, maybe four feet high berm, and kind of a soft berm, you know, four to one slope, so easily mowable. Public Works does mow that area south of the road curb line, but north of kind of where the slope into the pond starts. So that's currently maintained. But what the berm does, basically holds back some of the floodwaters from tipping over from the pond into the roadway, and then from the roadway then into the storm sewer. And then with some of this storm sewer pipe reconfiguration, they're basically isolating some of those residential areas to the north, kind of protecting them from, you know, water entering a flood situation, backing up and going into those low yards there between 13th and Shaun's Way. So they have, I asked them to quantify the improvement in flood risk, and they were not able to do that yet. So I hope to come back, like, when the project is completed, if you move forward with approving this memorandum of understanding, with some hard, well, not hard data, but calculated data from the watershed district in terms of how much they think that the, you know, flood levels may be reduced. Because I believe what they will be doing is recalculating their 100-year flood elevations in that area, which will be of benefit to the people that live around that location there. There may be future opportunity in other locations throughout the city, but they felt like this was the first place to move to and first place that they approached city staff with. I reviewed the plans, Public Works reviewed the plans, we made several comments and suggested several revisions. They took all of our comments and incorporated all of our requests to change things. Mostly, from my standpoint, was to protect the new investment in roadway pavement on 13th Avenue. You may remember that we overlaid that in, like, 2022, I think was the year. And so their original plan was actually to rip up a lot of that to do some of the storm sewer. And I said, but there's got to be a way. And we did find a way. So the road's going to be protected. They'll still use 13th Avenue to access the area from a construction standpoint. They said that they would, they would take responsibility for, you know, letting all the residents that live in the area know what's going on. They're going to run the project, not the city. We'll certainly be a resource, and hopefully we'll get some information to post on our website to let people know what this project is, if they live in the area. And if they have questions, they can contact the watershed folks for help. But I'm very satisfied with their reaction to our comments, their incorporation of our design preferences. They're using all of our city standards, you know, since we are, as a part of this memorandum of understanding, going to own and maintain the pipe. I mean, they don't have a Public Works Department. So that's where we come in. Like, we can maintain and inspect this pipe in perpetuity. We can mow the grass like we've always been mowing it. And on that note, I think I put in the memo, you know, anticipated budget impact is pretty nil, I guess. I mean, there's some linear foot of additional pipe to maintain, but we currently mow it. We're going to mow it in the future. It's just going to have a little berm on it. So I don't see, at least certainly within the first initial lifespan of, you know, these improvements, which should be 30 to 50 years minimum, I would say, right? That we shouldn't see much of an impact on the taxpayers, or at least from a surface-water utility fee or funding standpoint, that would typically fund these types of activities for Public Works. So, again, high level, Ramsey Washington is going to pay for the construction. They're going to manage the construction. There's no ask for city cost participation on the construction aspect of it. They're going to manage the contract. Public Works in the memorandum is agreeing to own and maintain the pipe, the new pipe, and the berm, I guess, and mow the grass over the long run. But it is a great example of a partnership between two organizations that have kind of a joint interest in, you know, making improvements that protect the public from flood risk, or minimize. We can't always protect everybody from all risk, but we can mitigate and minimize that risk. And there's a lot of work that went into this throughout the whole district, and we're really pleased that they kind of zoomed in and picked one of our locations as one of the first places to go. So staff's strong recommendation is that we're comfortable with the memorandum of understanding and the terms that are laid out within. The memorandum was based off of the exact same MOU that was, has been approved by councils previously for other joint efforts, like the improvements to Margaret Pond, the improvements to the pond by Cowan Elementary, that I think came before this council earlier this year. So pretty basic document. With that, I'll stand for any questions the council might have. And as a reminder, the action is to authorize signatures on a memorandum of understanding between the watershed district, the city of North St. Paul, related to these flood risk reduction improvements planned for this year. There might be a little bit of light restoration for early next year before they completely call it done, but I think most of the work will be done. Oh, and there's a bench out there, right, kind of in this location, in the northwest corner of the pond that looks out into the pond. And we've provided direction to them to salvage and protect that. Like, we're not going to remove it and then not put it, they might temporarily take it out and put it back. But, yeah, the bench will stay. And if we need to slide it a little bit for the berm, we'll do that. But that amenity will go back as it is today currently. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Will they be going on homeowners' properties to, between Shaun's Way and 13th Avenue, to get into those sewer culverts in there? Or will this be, this is part of the drainage system that runs through the city and all the way down to Coleman Lake, if I remember right?
Correct. There is storm sewer in Shaun's Way in the cul-de-sac that comes through, kind of on joint residential lot lines. There's storm sewer under 13th Avenue. There's pipes that go in and out of the pond. The ultimate pathway for the water is via pipe into a ravine that actually goes west. Ultimately, it ends up in Coleman Creek and Coleman Lake. To answer your question directly, though, no, I do not anticipate that they or their forces, their contractor, will need to access private property. All of it will be expected to be within the city right-of-way, and also on the PCU Pond parcel property, which the city does own in fee title.
One more question, please. City Manager Frandl, will this affect the sidewalk going along McKnight Road? And if they attach that sidewalk, that short sidewalk that our former councilman was looking to do, would that affect that process at all?
No, and as of now, there's, it was just a thought that was brought up from that council member. There's no definite plan to put a sidewalk through there, or trail through there, which would probably be more likely asphalt than anything. But either way, it's bermed up a little bit there, I believe, now.
Yeah, and if I could add on to that, I mean, there's nothing that with this project or with the improvements the watershed district has proposed that I believe would preclude, either in the near term, using it as a, you know, a grass walkway, like it's used today, or long term, if that winds up being upgraded to a hard surface. There's certainly a way to get, you know, over a berm or around a berm. There should be plenty of flexibility there, knowing, especially on the north side, there's no sidewalk on 13th Avenue to connect to at this time, right? So there's plenty of opportunity to plan that out, and people can continue to, when the construction's done, they can continue to use it as a cut-through or walk-through, I guess, on the west side of the pond to 11th Avenue.
So this will eliminate any overflow that would cause people on the backside of Shaun's Way, on the south side, and on the north side of 13th Avenue, of any high water?
That's the general approach for the improvements. I would not use the word eliminate. We cannot, no amount of engineering that can eliminate it, yeah. But the term, and the terminology the watershed district uses, I think, is very carefully selected in terms of this project being called a flood risk reduction, right? So we can, they can, these types of improvements can reduce the flood risk, but there always will be some risk for flooding or in an extreme 100-year, 500-year event, you know, which can and will happen at some time. You know, there will still be water in those low areas as there might be today. However, the risk of that and the calculated depth of those waters during a 100-year event, based on the watershed's calculations, does wind up being lower because of these types of improvements.
All right, thank you. So we're going to promote, is our ranging Washington Metro Watershed District Memorandum for Understanding of the Flood Risk Reduction Project at PCU Pond and 13th Avenue. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Woods.
Second.
Second, Councilmember McKenzie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
All right, next up is the 2025 pavement maintenance overlay. We read bids and award contract. We have Hannah here from WSB to discuss.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. So as Brian mentioned, the item before you tonight is to accept the bids and award the contract for the base bid and alternate two of the 2025 maintenance overlay via resolution for Batuminas Roadways. A little bit of background on this project. This was identified through the 2025 Capital Improvement Plan, through the annual maintenance overlay projects that Public Works does every year. This is a project that they work to identify every year, different project areas. And then they also oversee the construction and execution of the project following the contract approval. So WSB's role with this project was primarily just to support the development of the plans and specifications, as well as the bidding process, because it did exceed the minimum threshold for sealed bids. The proposed project locations are kind of all over the place in town here. So we've got a little bit on Hilltop Court, with going east on Navajo and west on Shawnee for a little bit, two segments on Margaret, Northwood Drive, and then Cowan Place. The project improvements include Batuminas Mill and Overlay, Batuminas Reclaim and Pave, and then some other minor spot improvements. This project was set up with a base bid, which includes, like, the majority of what I just listed, as well as two alternates. The first alternate being Cowan Place, and the second being a list of alternate items that allow Public Works to integrate those improvements throughout the project area without confining that to a specific location. So by setting that up as an alternate, we created more flexibility for them in how they select those improvements during construction implementation. The bid results came through with six bids, which is great, because we feel like that really brings a competitive bidding pool. The lowest bid was around $250,000 for that base bid quantity. That does not include either alternate, with the highest being around $384,000. Engineer's estimate was just beneath $300,000. So again, we feel like we got some pretty competitive bids. Batuminas Roadways came in at the lowest with a base bid of $250,000, alternate one of $51,000, and then alternate two of $153,000. The two funding sources identified for this project are, well, the first being the Capital Improvement Plan funding that is dedicated for this work. That's the $394,010. That's the large majority of this project budget, with an additional $10,000 coming out of the contracted repair and maintenance fund. That brings us to a total of $404,010. Staff is recommending that city council accept these bids and award the, by resolution, excuse me, the construction contract for the base bid and alternate two, in the amount of $403,520.85 for the 2025 maintenance overlay to Batuminas Roadways. That does not include alternate one. That portion of the bid did not fit within the allotted budget. So if awarded, staff anticipates this could begin as early as July of this year. At this time, I'll stand for any questions you may have.
This total will be the total for all roads being maintained and Batumas cut and put back down?
Yep. So that total goes for all the areas that I listed, Hilltop, Margaret, Margaret, and Northwood, and does not include Cowan, but it does include all those alternate items that need to be integrated throughout all of those areas, so that in those alternate two lists.
On a maintenance overlay project like this, who is responsible for quality control and how thick the maintenance overlay is, and how is that done?
So it's kind of a joint effort between, you know, the contractor meeting those requirements that are in the specification, and then also the inspector who's on site. I know, like, Randy is really going to be coordinating a lot of the construction efforts, so he'll be working with the contractor to make sure they're meeting those requirements. And we do specify, when we call out a mill and overlay, what depth they need to be meeting. And for some of these, they are edge mill and overlays, and so they'll be meeting that depth with the milling on the edge and then a consistent section across the top. And that'll all be monitored by the inspection, whether that's Randy or someone else on his team.
Awesome. Thank you.
Nothing else? Can I get a motion for the pavement maintenance overlay going to Batumas Roadways?
So moved, Your Honor.
So moved. Councilmember Norby?
Second.
Second, Councilmember McKenzie. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Great job.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next up is 2026 Pavement Preservation Project for City Project 26-01, Authorized Professional Service Proposal. Mr. Dolly.
Thank you, Brian, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This next item for your consideration here tonight is basically the start or the kickoff to next year's project, which is not a in-depth, full reconstruction project like what's going on right now in Casey Lake Park. So this is, and you heard the finance director talk about more of a focus on pavement preservation, but at a little bit higher level than the maintenance overlays that Public Works do on an annual basis that you just heard about and awarded a separate contract to, just previous to this item. I will say that the areas within this potential project were not identified in the Capital Improvement Plan like some of the other areas. They're left open-ended and based on review by Public Works on an annual basis, using qualitative quantitative. on review by Public Works on an annual basis, using qualitative, quantitative, sorry, data in terms of our pavement ratings, and also the institutional knowledge that Public Works staff has in terms of maintaining these roads. The areas within the potential project were identified, double-checked against potential budget numbers, to make sure that it would fit within the number that we had, worst-case scenario, if we had to reclaim all the roads, which is a little bit more expensive than just a simple mill and overlay. And so, those areas are listed within the memo, there's also a map there, but for the benefit of the council and the public, I'll just list them off. These are not written in stone, so we have to do some investigation to make sure that they're all kind of well-suited for these types of improvements, and staff will report back to you about September with information from the findings of this potential investigation that you're considering kicking off here. But those streets are Mohawk Road from 17th to McKnight, 7th Street North from the cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac north of 36th to 9th Avenue, Cowan Place from 7th Avenue to 6th Street, 6th Street from Holloway to 7th Avenue, Cowan again, from McKnight to 1st Street, Memory Lane from Cowan Place to Northwood Drive, Memory Court, Polaris Place from Holloway to Northwood and Polaris Court. All of these areas are exhibiting pavements that are in need of some attention, and some of the scope of the investigation that is included in the professional services proposal that will be in front of you for consideration here are data collection, right? So, roadway coring to figure out, is the pavement thick enough to actually be able to support a mill and overlay? Is there enough aggregate base or gravel underneath the asphalt to be able to support something like a reclamation? And then, based on that information, engineering staff, Public Works will sit down, will review that information, arrive at a recommendation again, that will bring forward to you kind of around September, to be able to consider kicking off actual preparation of design documents, final plans, with the goal of maybe bidding this in January, February, and having it under contract, ready to go for next year in the construction season. Most recently, we did in 2024, a very similar approach, slightly smaller than what this project will be, just based on budgetary constraints, but very similar, it went relatively smooth. Some of the roads were kind of right around Cowan Elementary. First, yeah, so I expect that this will be very similar, it's not highly invasive, we don't, we're not doing a significant amount of utility work, and so disruption to the traveling public and the people that live on these roads is relatively minimal, maybe some, you know, driveway access issues for a small portion of the project while we, you know, maybe potentially pour a concrete apron or something like that, but generally, they're fairly straightforward, and can be completed in a relatively short timeframe compared to some of the more heavy-duty reconstruction projects where we're doing water main replacement, for example. So, again, just to overview of some of the scope here, doing some topographic survey, we're pretty highly vested in using technology to do things more quickly and efficiently, so we're using drones to pick up a lot of the survey information, and aerial photography to be able to pick up where the catch basins are, and where the trees are, and that sort of thing. Geotechnical investigation, again, getting at those soils and making sure that there aren't any issues or problems that we're going to be investing a lot of money on top of, that are just going to create issues for us in the short term. And also some underground manhole inspections, right? So, it's very important to Public Works that we have an aggressive program of not leaving something and paving around it, and then it, you know, it's an old brick manhole, for example, that only has another five years left, now would be the time to try to get at that. So, that's generally it. Now, I can't make a recommendation to you that you authorize WSB to proceed, in the past, we've had the city manager kind of take that part, so I'll leave that out, but we would anticipate, if approved tonight, that we would start immediately, again, come before council or September timeframe with some recommendations on what exactly might occur on what streets, and a little bit of an update in terms of the costs, preliminary engineering, and a schedule and a proposal to move forward between September and January, February, with the plans and the bidding, basically, for the improvements. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions, and Brian can certainly relay the recommendation for the action item for you with this consideration for professional services for the 2026 pavement rehabilitation project.
Questions first?
I'm going to ask kind of a weird one, only because I'm a member. So, recently, the adopted drain program asked us to take a picture of all of our drains. Is that data public knowledge, and is that data included in a study like this?
That is, it's a city effort, right? It's not the Watershed District that's doing the adopted drain? Yeah, I have not been, I don't. Yeah, that, I have not been involved in that either, specifically, generally, it's a fairly common program, whether it's run by the Watershed District or the city, certainly it helps to raise awareness and education to avoid things like, not that this would ever happen in North St. Paul, but somebody changes the oil on their car, and they just kind of pour the old oil down the drain, and which, you know, all of our storm drains lead to wetlands, creeks, you know, lakes and rivers, basically, right? And so, that adopted drain gets a little bit more support, public support, and some ownership, I think, between, behind it, with the people that live kind of immediately adjacent to that. That doesn't necessarily dovetail in here directly, it's more educational, and it more relates to our MS4 program in terms of obligating educational and support items to prevent illicit discharge of things like motor oil, or whatever, lakes, rivers, and streams. But it does impact what we do with these projects, because we are looking at, at a very high level, just making sure that none of our catch basins need to be reconstructed at the same time that we're doing the pavements. But we are mostly focused on the asphalt and the pavement rehabilitation, some curb and gutter. So, but we are not planning, just in case this is kind of where you were going, we're not planning any augmentation on that, but if folks are interested, I thought I remember seeing there is some information on our website, or maybe it's the Ramsey-Washington Metro Watershed District's website, related to adopted drain, and so there should be more information there, or they can always reach out to city staff, and we'll help anyone with those questions if they'd like more information.
Awesome, thank you.
We had programs like that a while back, when we had an environmental advisory commission, we'd put.
Placks, yeah.
Placks by the drains and show that this goes to the lake, and picture of a fish on there, to try to do a little public outreach and education. That was a while ago. I don't think we do.
After storms, if you go by it and you see that there's leaves and stuff plugged, just pull it out.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So, no more questions, I would like to make a recommendation to authorize the professional services as proposed, please.
All right, motion?
So moved.
So moved, Councilmember Woods.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Norby, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Thank you.
Thanks, Morgan.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we've got reports from city manager and departments. So, we'll be starting, I think I informed most of you that, starting a process now for looking at the solid waste contract, which will be up next year. It's looking at a year to, what, 16 months or so, to kind of do that whole thing. I would imagine there's going to be some public outreach, but also looking for your input, from maybe feedback you've heard from the public about bulk pickup. There's many different ways to do that, you know, do you offer it quarterly, you know, at a free cost, or do you just do blanket across the board, lower cost? But we'll look at different options, find out what, maybe what more common options are out there. This is a company that is through Ramsey County, and they do put together an RFP at no cost to the city, so, nice feature. Like, department's been busy with storms lately, there's been some tree damage, but they do a really good job with their tree trimming, keep them back from the power lines. Past couple of weeks, we've only had probably six power outages, and only one of them was more than one home, so, they're up and going. They have a, actually, tonight, they have a scheduled power outage for Richardson Elementary School, because they're putting a large solar system on top of the roof of that building there, so. Communications, Ava's been busy with her events, we've had kids' music in the park, had 44 attendees, which was good, at Housie Park, it was kind of rainy, but it worked out good, they got them all inside and had a good time. They have, next week is going to be their second event for fitness in the park, so that'll be on July 9th at Housie Park again. Community Development's been busy reviewing the townhome project, they have another, we have another meeting scheduled with the potential fourplex and threeplex there at South and 7th Street that they're looking at. Doing some zoning updates on home occupation and townhouse ordinances that are under review, and updating ballfield maintenance agreements, and fencing with the high school, again, looking at those. HR's been pretty happy with the pay comm, looking for that coming forward, as you guys heard tonight. Shell's been working with the paid family leave implementation come in 2026. Public Works has got some signs out, especially along where the DNR Trail crosses some of the roads that we have, having issues of some vehicles and trucks parking too close, so that they can't see around them, so nobody gets hit, trying to keep the trucks back further from where it crosses. Also, down at McKnight Field, trying to get some of the parking taken care of down there, as well as on, over on Henry, we got, give them tickets in one place, and they move to We have the temp water up there on Buell, properties up on Buell now. They have, they're continuing on with their inspection of the water pipes, to find out if they got the ladder, what they have in there, it's just slowly picking away, so we have a more full picture with the whole city. And they're working on the plans for the next student-built house over there that we're working on, so, that'll be exciting, keep that going. Fire Department, they're working on their coverage for the 4th of July, things always pick up this time of year, fireworks going off. And actually, the fire department's, seems like year after year, they keep getting their higher and higher callouts, they've already reached 1,000 calls for this year, which, last year, they didn't get that until the end of July, so. They have their picnic, fire department picnic, coming up on July 9th, and they're hoping to have their new vehicle here by the end of the month, and then they want to kind of open-to-the-public type deal, they might set it up up on 19th by the beach, and just spray the water, let the kids run through it, and have the public enjoy the new vehicle. Police Department's got three new hires starting on July 7th, which makes them full capacity.
Nice.
Yes.
A long time.
It's been a while. And they do have their formal swearing-in, and Ramsey County Honor Guard will be there, and that will be on Monday, July 28th. So, they'll be talking to you about that for participating, if you're available. And they're also working on their coverage for July 4th. You know, they've taken the count with Ramsey County for any kind of backup things, and just try to keep an eye on everything out there. And that's all I got.
Thank you. All right, reports, council commissions, committees.
I have nothing from the EDA this week.
Nope, thank you.
The Arts and Culture Commission will be meeting here in council chambers tomorrow at 6:30.
The Planning Commission that was scheduled for July 3rd has been moved to Wednesday, July 9th. Unfortunately, due to previous commitment, I will not be able to attend that one.
Are they going over that one again? What is the, isn't there something that they're looking at doing, I'm trying to remember what the agenda is for that one, I thought it was something.
Something, there was a rezoning that they were looking at.
Was that what?
Is that for along 7th Avenue, those homes along in there, they're.
Yeah.
And if I remember right, it was to basically make things that are, what's the word, not in compliance, into compliance, so.
Clean up some zoning updates, yeah.
Good, all right, thank you. Any general business?
Well, with fireworks coming up, are we have any kind of a trailer system going to be parked down there to kind of eliminate some of the, that could potentially damage our park?
I talked to the police chief today, last year, he had borrowed one from, I believe, Ramsey County, they had a spare at the time, he reached out to them, they did not have it. So, I referenced him to how White Bear Lake does it, they have rentals that they use, actually, and put them out all summer long at some of their beaches and different areas. So, he was going to look into that, to see if that was available. Part of our issue was, we didn't have camera coverage over the parking lot, which is where we had tended to have some of our problems. We do have camera on the parking lot now, so that'll be helpful, but hopefully, we can still get a trailer out there.
Okay. Just want to make sure that's safe, and that doesn't get damaged again.
And if not, they will be doing drive-throughs there, he said, on a regular basis.
Could we put a car down there with lights on for a couple hours, just to deter everything?
I'll, I'll talk to them about it.
At least scare the people away, you know? Otherwise, I'll sit down there.
That'll scare them.
It will, too, I know.
All right.
I would just like to remind everyone listening, that with the new motorcycle law is going into effect today, with filtering and splitting, please, please check your sideview mirrors when you're driving.
Yes.
I don't like that law.
I was at the car show last Friday, it was the banner turnout, lots of people, beautiful evening for it, so it was a, it was another great success.
Indeed.
There's nothing else, our next meeting will be July 15th, I asked for adjournment. So moved, Councilmember McKenzie.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Woods, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, and have a great night.